I'd like to call the City in order, St. Paul City Council meeting in order if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody. At this time, Jenny, if you can take the role.
Councilmember Thorson.
Here.
Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Wong.
Here.
Councilmember Cole.
Here.
Mayor Furlong.
Here. Coram is present. At this time, motion to adopt the agenda.
Moved, Your Honor.
Moved by Councilmember Peterson.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Wong. Any discussion? Not all. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We don't have any presentations that I'm aware of. No presentations. Next time is the consent agenda, and that is the 2021 workshop minutes, the 2021 regular media minutes, the 2021 HRA minutes, general claims of $1,590,461.99, HRA general claims of $191.34, the monthly building permit report for June of 2021, resolution to accept resignation of city manager and appoint interim city manager, resolution approving acceptance of donations received June of 2021, application for a temporary on sale liquor license, and an application for charitable gambling for exempt permit for the Church of St. Peter, application for a temporary on sale liquor license for the Church of St. Peter, cooperative agreement with Ramsey County McKnight Road and Anchor Drive cost participation, Rotary Park waif finding signage, and declaration of equipment surplus. At this time, if the council member would like to pull any item, they can do so at this time. Anybody want to pull anything? If not, motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Cole.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Thorson. Any discussion? Not all. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. It's time the meeting open to the public, and the public at this time can talk. Are we on Zoom at all?
Yes, and no one has their hand raised at this time.
No one has. Okay. If we keep it to a three-minute minimum for the open to the public, and I'll call on Dave Nelson. Come on down, Dave. Welcome, Dave. Thank you. Dave Nelson, 2574 East Fourth Avenue. I'm going to talk on Southwood. I took the Master Nachos class here probably about 13 or 14 years ago, and my capstone was that one acre out in the front. And that was where Henry Castle, when he first rode in here from the history that we looked at, he'd come into town, he had to stand up on his saddle, not on top, but to stand up to see what it looked like. So we're trying to restore, with all the native plants, we're trying to restore that area back to what North St. Paul was like. We've been putting a lot of plants in, we removed a lot of garbage out of there, restored a lot of stuff, but who's ever doing the spraying has been killing the plants. My wife and I have put $400 plus plants in there. We put cardinal flower in, butterfly weed. We even have a wild monarch garden going. What they do, they come by, run over it, and with the tank they're spraying here, and the fog just goes. And when you look at the butterfly garden, the flowers, like this. Now you look at the leaves, they're starting to curl up. Now if that butterfly lays a larvae there, it's going to die. Nothing's going to produce. And we just finally got that thing going four years now. And this spring, I met a guy out there that was, we were pulling yellow and garlic mustard and plus small unwanted trees that were, you know, like ash and that, getting them out. So it's a regular prairie, it's supposed to be a prairie setup. And I asked him, I said, can I help you? He says, I'm out here to see what we have to spray. I says, can you spot spray? I says, I know you can put a tank on your back and go and just spot spray the plants. No, they take the four-wheeler, and when they shoot a fog here, it drifts, wipes out everything. We only have one butterfly plant that's blooming out there yet from the six we put in. The four cardinal flowers, they totally took out. And my wife, she put in a wild rose garden, spirea roses out there for the butterflies, and they sprayed that every time and kill it. That gets a little bit expensive out of my pocket. They took down the split rail fence. We had a lot of compliments on the split rail fence. They says, that really makes North St. Paul look like the country. And we had a lot of volunteers do a lot of work. I know Mayor, he helped a lot out there. You helped us put up the deck, you helped with our cleanup, Candy worked with cleanup, and that, and all the residents around there. Now, the wood chips, it need to be chipped bad. It's so encroached that one person can only walk in certain spots. That's how wide the trail is. I know they had somebody go through with the lawnmower, and I appreciated that widen the trail out, but it needs to be wood chipped again. And the last time, oh, it's gotta be probably six, seven years ago, I left the meeting because when we were on the park commission, we were charged $50 a load, and that was coming out of the budget from Southwood. So I get ahold of Victoria Reinhardt, and I says, can you do me a favor? I says, I need wood chips. Where can I get them for free? I says, North St. Paul's charged me $50 a load. And then she says, how much you want? I want two semis. Two semis come, they dropped it off on Saturday, and one of the city workers, we were with the loader, we spread it, and the guy from Ramsey County come and to see, because he figured it'd take a week to spread it. The truck was empty. He says, you'll have the next load in 45 minutes. We had the whole thing spread that weekend, and it looked nice. We had a lot of people comment on it and that. And there is a lot of people that do use that part, and I just, my wife and I go around, we pull garlic mustard and all that, too. So there's a lot of volunteer work that's going in there. We can, some of the people have moved on. We can use some more people to help volunteer and that, but it's going back the other way. And we're getting older, it's harder for us and that, and some of the people are kind of getting a little disgusted the way it looks. Thank you, Dave, for your service and Donna, you know, you always, your volunteer time out there.
Vic and Vivian and Kathy and.
Yep. Yep. So when it comes to the spraying, you know, we're not, we're not doing it. We're not spraying it. We just got to figure out, you know, be able to help you to determine, you know, who's spraying and make sure they're not doing the right, the wrong plants.
Yeah. I told them, I says, if you can't spot spray, please stay out because you're destroying the plants.
But I'm assuming that, I'm assuming that comes from the Southwood Preserve Committee.
I don't know who hired them or what, but.
Right. So we'll have to, we'll have to look into that. And then the wood chips, I know it depends on what year. I mean, you know, one year they had probably a storm that went, and they had more wood chips than they knew what to do with. But I know that, you know, wood chips is kind of hard to get now because we haven't had those storms in the last few years.
Yeah, but it's starting to go backwards because we're getting older and some of them have left.
Yep. But I know there is a Southwood Nature Preserve Committee, and we need to address them, too, to figure out, you know, their needs.
If they would volunteer, it would help, too.
Yep. Yep. So, so thank you.
But no, I appreciate what everybody's doing and that, but if, if it comes to a point you don't want us out there, please give me a letter saying no more work out there.
We have, no, we want you there. We do want you there.
Because, but it's kind of disgusted when they went through and the money we stuck in there, and they killed it all. And I even went out there, and we put flags up, don't spray here, don't do here, you know, circle it, and they still, they will not listen.
Right. We need to figure that out.
Yeah. Because at the beginning, I walked with a tank and I spot sprayed.
Sure.
But, you know, since I'm not in the park commission or the, or the commission anymore, I don't do that.
So Brian's taking notes, and we're looking to see who's spraying and.
Oh, is he going to volunteer?
He's going to volunteer to go do it.
Anyway.
Well, thank you, David.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep, appreciate it. John Schmal. Welcome, John.
Thank you, Mayor. John Schmal, 2750 Chisholm Avenue. First item, I'd just like to say I'm very thankful that we have media and newspapers that will take up, please, to look into what cities do, and that we had a recent example of that. And as I say again, I'm really thankful that we have media that will take an interest in what might be happening in a city. I know that I got involved in dealing with the media many years ago when we had Polar Net, and I certainly didn't want it. And imagine what a mess we would been in now with a cord cutting with our own internet provider. It would have been a mess, and it wasn't a fun time. People who were against it weren't treated very nicely. Anyway, second item, I got my water bill. I happen to be reading the White Bear paper, the little organ that they have, and in there they had an article about the last meeting on the water situation, and 75 gallons per capita. And I looked at my water bill this month. I used up 154 days, and I didn't water that much. So you can only think about if we have to change over, what's going to happen. It's not going to be pretty. Last item is, I was here a while ago, said this arm doesn't work, and the reason that I brought it up was that, you know what I brought up twice before, and even Councilmember Thorson tried to intercede and ask, you know, can't you get an answer to Mr. Schmal? That didn't do any good either. So maybe it's a situation where you can say, electric superintendent Frandl, have you heard about what Mr. Schmal has asked for? No.
John, 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 we're not here to.
Well, anyway, this is the third time. We have the electric guy right here, and will he answer me? I have, just as a personal experience, I'm trying to get the internet at my cabin in northern Wisconsin. There's one person who says, no, you're not going by my property and having it buried in the property. There, they expect, they respect property rights. Here in this city, they just do it. So what is going to be the answer? Thank you.
Brian, can you reach out to John? Do you want to reach out now, or are you?
I actually reached out to John last fall and told him that, well, I don't know how far you want to get into this, but told him that my intention was not to go out there and dig that up the way it was, because the way it stands right now is if you looked at, all that was in the front of the property was a lathe. It wasn't a property pin that I was looking at. He said somewhere in the back, there was a property pin. And he was saying, that's, that's the line, that's the property line. So in looking at that, that wire that was located there looked like it could have been six inches potentially on his property. And another thing that I explained to him then was locating is not an exact science. That is why the Minnesota State statute says when you're going off of locates, you cannot dig by mechanical means within a locate mark within two feet because it's not an exact science. So that could very well be 10 inches or six inches or more actually on the neighbor's property. We don't know that. And I know the suggestion came up that, well, maybe that should be dug up for him. Well, I don't think that should. I don't think we are public contractors to do that type of work. When they put that in, it was a common practice, you dig down the property line, and they dug down, you went the same distance, and then on each house, the, his neighbor also has a meter box directly out from his. So they put it down the property line, and then they went off to the houses from there. That was a common practice. Now, I mean, even when you're doing it with a backhoe, you separate the services to each side of the trench that you dig, you know, and then it gets buried back. Sometimes a wire moves when the dirt gets pushed into the hole. But I had no intention of going out there and digging up his front lawn to move that six inches, if that's even where it's at. We do not know that. The neighbor's service is also right there in the trench as well. So who knows? That service, his service could actually be on his neighbor's property. We just don't know that. And that, we actually have that probably in quite a few places around our system. That's just the way it was dug, dug in at the time. And to say that it's not safe for people to dig around them if it's that important to him, people do it every day, whether or not they're building decks, they're putting in fences, they're doing additions on their own. It happens all the time.
How far, how deep is it?
It could be anywhere from 30 inches to 48 inches, more or more in some places.
So I guess, John, at this time, we're not, we're not going to be digging it up to see where that.
When they were finding that, that line with these new hydraulic systems that they have, they were just down the street finding gas lines and electric lines for putting in Comcast cables. And, or I'm sorry, it was Xfinity. It's cool. You ought to see it. They do it with water, and they go down. The guy showed me. See down there? There's the gas line. This doesn't require getting a shovel and digging down and a backhoe. It doesn't require it. They just use water, and they make a hole about the size of a, oh, bigger, a little bigger than a grapefruit, go right down over it, pound it. It was a plastic.
I take the, I take the point here is that this, this is down four feet, five feet?
It could be. Yes.
And if it's off two inches, you want us to go and move it two inches?
Who knows that it's two inches? Who says it's two inches?
I have no, I have no idea.
Nobody knows. You got to go find it.
But, but what is the, how is it?
It's on my property. No one asked for easement for the neighbor's line.
If it's on your, if it's on your property?
Pardon?
If it's on your property.
It is on my property.
Well, I think that's debate, debatable.
That is debatable. If we start doing private contract work, that certainly opens up a lot of doors.
We're going to move on here. So we have nobody, nobody else for public comment? At this time, we have the city business and action items, and that is city manager, action city manager Brian.
Thank you, Mayor. The first thing up is amendment resolution for flood hazard mitigation grant funding. This is being brought forward by Pat Lynch from the DNR. So the amendment, the resolution 2021-057 states the applicant has the financial capability to provide any required matching funds, and that the source of the applicant's matching funds shall be $120,000. In review, by the Minnesota management and budget, the amount should match the city's share for the surface water utility fund, which is $180,000. And they were looking for that amendment.
So this is for the property, Sean Rivet's property, in regards to his request for us to purchase his property, and this would be for us to take the grant, and it's a matching grant.
Matching grant, correct.
You know, to me, there's a lot more questions here in regards to, so if we accept this tonight, so the question is, are we accepting this tonight for that?
Can I just, can I just say something? I actually spoke with Pat, and this is a resolution that was already passed. The only change in that is it was $120,000, and he said it needs to be $180,000 by the MMB. That dollar amount needed to be, that's, this resolution's already been passed. So in order to continue moving forward, that, this new resolution with the correct dollar amount needs to be passed. It was.
So that's just accepted. We're not, we're still in negotiation, though. It doesn't mean that.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify at a staff level. So I don't believe that adopting this resolution locks the council in to move forward with accepting the grant or allocating those match dollars, but it is a requirement of the DNR that we have that resolution approved and in place. I think they're just aligning numbers, right, with the application, probably.
Like holding that number for us.
It's a housekeeping measure. It's probably formality, but staff does need to have that conversation formally with the council about whether they want to move forward if the grant is awarded, which I think we think it will be formally, maybe once this resolution is passed, but we certainly need to have that conversation with council.
Okay. Any questions for Soren or city manager?
Again, my, my only question is, the acceptance of the resolution is we're accepting the financial amendment to what the DNR is asking for. We're not necessarily aligning, agreeing, or disagreeing with the ask of the resident, correct?
I have not reviewed this, so I'm going to defer to other staff who's maybe been in communication with the DNR, but based on what I'm hearing tonight, that's my understanding.
This is the exact resolution that was approved, that resolution number 57, and the only change to that was the dollar amount, and that's in order to proceed to get that grant.
And at that time, that was.
So the grant, the grant still hasn't been awarded or rejected?
No, no.
And this does not commit us to the purchase of the property.
That's my understanding. So certainly the city would need to allocate those match dollars and move forward with the purchase of the property with the grant dollars. Staff's previous activity was simply to apply for the funds, and if awarded, then have that further continuation of that discussion with city council in terms of moving forward next steps.
Any other discussion for Morgan? If not.
I completely understood our clerk's explanation. We've already passed this. It's a technicality to update the dollar amount.
Good. So at this time, the resolution is to, resolution, amend the resolution 2021-057 for flood hazard mitigation grant funding assistance to the city of North St. Paul. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Thorson. Is there a second?
I'll second it, Your Honor.
Seconded by Councilmember Peterson. Any discussion? Not all. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. City manager, Brian Frandl.
Thank you, Mayor. Action item B is the zoning code text amendment to implement the 2040 comprehensive plan, and Eric is here to discuss that this evening.
Welcome, Eric.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This is the third time you have seen this project. We brought it forward on the regular agenda on June 1st, and then reviewed it at the work session on June 15th, and then was directed to bring this back. A couple of things to note. So from that work session, there was no direction to make any amendments, so it's the same ordinance. In talking with the city clerk today, it is a 49-page ordinance, which would be cost prohibitive to publish in paper, and the state statute does allow us to do a summary ordinance. So we've updated the packet today to include the summary ordinance, which is only three pages, and, but to publish that, there's a resolution that needs to authorize that summary ordinance. So there's three documents, but talking with the city attorney, we only need two votes. The first one would be on the overall ordinance, which would require just a simple majority. You can do the motion for the summary ordinance and the resolution authorizing the publication of the summary ordinance in one, but by state statute, that requires a four-fifth majority to have that summary ordinance. So it's all the same text amendments reviewed previously, just to simplify the publication. We're asking for the two motions. As I amended in, in the staff report that went with this, the ordinance has already been available on our website, and the ordinance, full ordinance, will be available in paper here at City Hall. So anybody who wants to see the ordinance can still see the ordinance. It just won't be published in the St. Paul, or sorry, Star Tribune, all 49 pages with this. So with that, I would stand for any questions.
Any questions for Eric? I guess I'm confused on the motions that you need, the.
We need one motion on the ordinance, and then we need a second motion on the summary ordinance and the resolution authorizing publication of the summary ordinance.
And I'm not seeing that unless someone can help me.
Page 5 of 65 in the zoning text amendment packet attachment.
And just for, I did talk with the communications consultant, and she did instruct me that I can attach those separately in the future to try not to put all these ordinances all into one package. But thank you, Councilmember Thorson, for pointing out the page.
I can read it to.
Well, I'm not seeing it on here. And then I just lost the page. Give me a second here. I lost my city page.
Page 123, Mayor.
I'm close. What page did you say? 123?
Yes.
Okay. So Eric, you want, if it's page 123, this is the...
Mayor, it's an ordinance amending the North St. Paul City Court of Ordinances, including, and I won't, I'll just talk about the sections. But Title VII, Chapter 72, Section 4. And then Title 15, Chapter 154, Sections 3, 6, 7, 8, and 10.
Yeah, I don't have that.
It should be before, right before the minutes.
I have it here. I mean, I can just show it to you, or I can read it. I mean...
Why don't you go, go ahead.
Okay, so the first ordinance is on page 5 of 65. Well, I, I think it's just, we can square that away after the meeting. But it's the ordinance amending the North St. Paul City Code of Ordinances, Title VII, Traffic Code, Chapter 72, Section 4, Truck Parking Restrictions, and Title XV, Land Usages, Chapter 154, Zoning Regulations, Section 3, Definitions, Section 6, Residential Districts, Section 7, Mixed Use Districts, Section 8, Overlay Districts, and Section 10, General Regulations.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Thorson.
Second.
Second, Councilmember Peterson. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
And then the second motion here is on page 50. 54, 65. And you said we can do these individually, or we can do them together? Doesn't matter? Okay.
Councilmember Thorson, you can do both actions with one single.
Okay, so I'll, I'll make a motion and I'll read these two. An ordinance amending the North St. Paul, this is a summary publication. An ordinance amending the North St. Paul City Code of Ordinances, Title VII, Traffic Code, Chapter 72, Section 4, Truck Parking Restricted, and Title XV, Land Usages, Chapter 154, Zoning Regulations, Section 3, Definitions, Section 6, Residential Districts, Section 7, Mixed Use Districts, Section 8, Overlay Districts, and Section 10, General Regulations, and resolution approving publication of ordinances, amending the North St. Paul City Code of Ordinances. And I'm not gonna read all that again. I think we get it.
It's a repeat. Yeah, it's a repeat of the ordinance, just the resolution.
Yeah.
That's why I didn't want to read it, because it was too long.
They, it's called delegation. We're happy to help.
Motion, motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Thorson, seconded by Councilmember Wong. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Eric. Appreciate it. I still can't find it.
We'll move on to...
Move on to City Manager.
City Business Action Item C, consideration to approve resolution approving common interest agreement, water appropriations permit amendment appeal. Soren will be covering this.
Thanks, Brian. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, what's before you is, for your consideration, is a proposed resolution that allows the city of North St. Paul to work with some of the surrounding communities as we prepare for the hearing with the DNR as it relates to the water appropriation permit. I believe we've spoken about that water appropriation permit. As we know, as a result of the White Bear Lake litigation, the DNR has reached out to multiple communities that were within a five-mile range of White Bear Lake to modify our water appropriation permit based on Judge Marinon's district court ruling. The city did object to that. There are several things in the order that are concerning, things like watering bans, things like investigating, looking into surface water, and an overall reduction in our water appropriation. It is exceptionally objectionable in some respects because the DNR themselves have said the science doesn't support the very things that seemingly they're looking to require at this point. So that has been appealed. We are going to have to have a hearing on it. Because it impacts multiple cities, we are trying to do this as economical as possible by sharing ideas with some of the other cities, both in strategy and ultimately some discovery. And so, under the law, what we need to do is receive permission from you, the client, to work with them as we move forward. We are dealing with issues of whether we should consolidate the appeal, whether we have just one hearing with 11 communities present, or whatever, how many a community is, or whether we should have individual hearings. We're still working through that. But this agreement allows us to communicate with each other to talk about that process. So ultimately, we are still pursuing the objectives that the council authorized us to pursue when we originally appealed this determination. This, I believe, allows us to do it more efficiently. So I'll certainly stand for any questions. Otherwise, we are asking you to approve the resolution that's before you. In terms of status, we don't have any hearing dates set yet. We're still in the preliminary stages. I think the administrative law judge is still trying to wrap his arms around what's the best path forward. There are outside parties that have tried to insert themselves into the hearing. We're trying to decide whether all of the communities want to work together, maybe just on the discovery, or do we try certain issues? We're still in the process. So I don't necessarily have a report for you on the standing of it, other than that it's, it's in the works. We think we'll be able to try these up within, within several months, but, but not, not in the immediate future either.
Soren, this is gonna be a long process, isn't it?
Certainly stands like it could be. Yeah.
All right. Any questions for the attorney? If not, I do have that in front of me. Resolution for approving common interest agreement, water appropriation permit amendment appeal. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Thorson. Seconded by Councilmember Wong. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Pose. The motion carries.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is process hiring of the city manager. I don't know if, Brian, if you wanna, I, I know we got Soren here now, so we're...
Yep, now's our time to expand the conversation and have Soren step in.
So Soren, we did have the, in the workshop, we did talk about this. And our, our question was in regards to, I think we're all in favor of going out to an outside agency. I think that's in the best interest of the city as the council. We, we talked about it, and we, we think that's the best way to go. But one of the question is, so do we go with an RFP to, to get all these agencies to get an RFP? Or in your mind, I mean, is there an agency out there that you've dealt with that you feel we could expedite this process and still get the best results?
You know, I, I think I've dealt with them all, and I don't necessarily have a, a go-to on these. I, you know, sometimes I'm involved with the city, sometimes I'm not. You know, what, what may be best, my concern with an RFP, and you can certainly do that, although you're not required to. I don't know if you guys talked about the expense, but I think you should anticipate this process will be in the $20,000 to $25,000 range. The, what I have typically seen happen is there's the usual suspects. We, we solicit them, we send out a request for a quote on it. And then we just empower the city manager to select a firm. And then that firm takes over the hiring process. We can certainly do an RFP, and then we can bring them back to you. You can interview them. I think that if we hired a consultant tomorrow to begin the process, you're probably looking at a minimum of three, possibly four months before you get a city manager in. I think if you do the RFP process where we advertise it, bring in the consultants, interview them at a council level, I think you're stacking at least another two months on that process. So I, I think to, to simplify it, what, what I've seen most communities do is just simply direct Brian to solicit quotes and then bring back his recommendation for the council and gauge them, and then let them do their thing, so to speak.
Is council, questions for Soren? Councilmember Thorson?
Yeah, so, and correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding on how these outside consultants work is they essentially, once we determine on who that is, do they kind of come in and meet with each council member on a one-on-one basis? And then they talk to us as, as a council as a whole, get direction on kind of the process, being what type of person you're looking for? And then how many final candidates are you looking for us to bring forward for you to interview? Is it 10? Is it three? Is it two? Whatever? And then it just moves forward? In that sense, we're, we're involved, our involvement is the selection and then giving them initial direction on what type of person. And then from there, they're doing it all. And then they're bringing forth the, the final list of candidates. So in respect of expediting this process, I would certainly agree with, with what you've laid out in that, you know, we can have further discussion once we move farther along. As far as, you know, obviously, if we tell them, bring us three candidates, that's gonna be quicker than 10, you know, so.
Yep. And I, I think the, the feedback in terms of what you're looking for, management style, things of that nature are important. What I've, wanna, in my experience, one of the nice things with using a consultant is that, one, sometimes they have a, a stable of people that they know are interested or looking for moving up. So there is a recruitment process in there. And that's not just, you know, listing an ad and waiting for the phone to ring. They'd sometimes go out and recruit. In addition, it's a nice filter, candidly. They can indicate that they've talked to the council, they have a sense of where they're at. And it allows potential candidates to use them as a sounding board to kind of feel out the process and the position. So it's, it's, it's nice to have that buffer. You give the initial direction, and then they carry out. And they, of course, work with Brian and other staff as need be. But it's, it's nice because they just handle it. And they do it, and they do a good job.
It sounds like that's the process, and I think we're pretty comfortable with that. I'll need Brian to make that call to agencies or whatever. And, and you can work with them and pick out the right one and get the right person.
Right. So I think we would probably, I, I would think we can get this done in the next month. You don't have a meeting, you don't have your first meeting in August, is my understanding. So I think we will be bringing back a recommendation for a consultant. That's your August 17th meeting.
Okay. We need a motion for that then?
I think we can stand on direction as long as you understand that's the process. We're not asking for you to necessarily approve anything tonight. We just want you to know that's what we're gonna do. And, you know, obviously, if there's objections to the consultant brought forward, then we can discuss that. That'll delay the process. But I, I think we'll be able to bring you back a solid recommendation.
Yep. I think we're all in agreement with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Soren. City Manager Frandl.
Thank you, Mayor, for reports from the city manager. Just a quick update on a couple of developments. We have the 7th Street Townhomes. So as you know, as I reported last time, the, the first lift of the road and the curb line is in. Since that time, we've done the joint trench digging out there. So we've installed the conduit for electric. And also, that was buried in that trench was gas and Comcast put in the trench as well. We have a contractor coming out. Hopefully, this Friday, we'll be boring across 7th Street to get to the other side. We'll be bringing us and Comcast with that. And gas is in the process of boring that road as well. But that project's moved along well. We, I forwarded the development contract to them. They reviewed it. The initial contract wasn't signed. So there was a little bit of figuring out there of what the actual amount would be for the permits and the fees. So we've had that back and forth. I think we're close to that number, which then we will turn around and get the signatures on for the project. Also, the downtown Centennial, it's moving along well. They're, met with them there today. They're in the process of getting close to doing the, the drainage system underneath their parking lot over there. And speaking with Midstate, the inside seems to be going well. Third floor is mostly done. It sounds like second floor's got a pretty good start to it as well. Within, hopefully, three weeks, we'll be, they'll have formed up the pad for the transformer, and we'll get the power in there. And then get our loop feed fed to the building as well. And it won't be long after that, they'll be ready for us to place meters out there and get that energized. So it's moving along. That's the updates I have for you.
That's it?
I know. I'm slacking.
Not bad.
Not at all. I'm gonna go off agenda here, and let's introduce our new, our finance director. And, and maybe he can say hi and give a little, maybe a little background on yourself. And welcome, Dan, to, to the city of North St. Paul. I, I know I haven't give you, given you a pen yet, so I, I do owe you, I do owe you a pen to put on your, on your lapel. So you do have one of these coming. So, Dan, if you want to say a few words and...
Mayor and council members, thank you very much. Actually, this is an honor for me to have been selected to be the finance director of the extraordinary city of North St. Paul. I, I, I have over 30 years of government experience, primarily in Ramsey County. I, I've been telling this story, and so I'm gonna tell the story to the, to the city council. You know, I woke up a, a few times after I had accepted the position without, what am I doing? Because I have a lot to learn. And we've got some new accounting softwares that are, that are coming in August here. And obviously, learning, you know, your processes and so forth. And I thought, what am I doing? And I got a little worried, had a couple of sleepless nights. My first day was last Monday. After that day, I went home, told my wife I had made the right choice. I was totally amazed at the professionalism, the friendliness, and the dedication and the quality of the staff that is here at the city of North St. Paul. And I am honored to be here, and I will not fail you. And I thank you very much.
And you looked at the council and the mayor, and you said, oh, my God, what a great group of people?
Absolutely. It is still going, just, no, this is a very nice discussion and, and get a sense and a feel for your expertise. So, yes, I'm, I'm honored. So thank you.
Good. Well, welcome. And we, we look forward to working with you. And I know this is a, kind of a tough time to jump in, you know, right during budget and, you know, working with the council and everything. So we look forward to working with you. So thank you for, for joining our team. All right, reports of council, commissions and committees, council member Cole.
Next Park and Rec Commission meeting is the 28th, next Wednesday night. It's at McKnight Field. In conversation, it sounds like it's gonna be around the concession area because they'll be picking tables around to be able to accommodate seating. There will be a community meeting from 6:00 to 6:30, followed by the Park and Rec meeting right, right after that. One quick update from last month's Park and Rec meeting. I had a resident reach out to me regarding the Ramsey County open space. Apparently, the open space must border the residence, residence property line. He had reached out to Ramsey County as well as the city of Maplewood. It is not one of what is deemed one of the open spaces that Ramsey County recognizes. And when the resident contacted Maplewood, he, the resident was instructed that that's North St. Paul property. I did reach back out to the resident and ask that individual to contact staff with, with their findings and share with... I did reach back out to the resident and ask that individual to contact staff with, with their findings and share with. Evidently, there must be a little area of land over there that there are people residing in, tent community, and there's been some other things going on, and they're, the resident's having a, a hard time just trying to figure out who to talk to for, for resolution, not necessarily looking to move anybody, but just somebody to take ownership to the area. So just, that's just a quick follow-up. It's been a busy couple of weeks. We had an EDA meeting. Primary two topics for the EDA meeting were the redevelopment master plan, and whether we're gonna go forward and update that, as well as the downtown parking needs and what they look like in the near future and long future. There were no actions that came from this meeting for council at this time, so. Followed up by, two days later, an EDI, EDA and Planning Committee joint meeting. Again, really no actionable issues or topics that came out of that. It was well-attended by, by council. Councilmember Wong, Mayor Furlong and myself were in attendance, and I'm sure one or both of you may have additional insight to share. That's it. I'm gonna stop. I got pages, but I'm gonna stop.
Councilmember Wong?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, just to add on in, in terms of the joint meeting, I think, you know, the redevelopment master plan was something that I think overall was desired to do, maybe a little bit of a facelift. So just kind of touching base and kind of doing some updates with that. And then, yeah, I think it was well-attended, and, and it was nice to see the planning commission and the EDA in person, so that was our first meeting. But other than that, the planning commission has not met. We had a month off, and so we will meet again on the first Thursday of this month, or August, excuse me.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yeah, I've had a couple busy weeks with the League of Minnesota Cities. We got some new members on the board, and it's in good hands. I have one more year to serve. And I was on a policy meeting on state revenues last week to see where all the money is going, and that's been pretty informative. And today I was on a financial for the league, a policy committee, and the dues went down 1%. So that's good. I don't know what it's all gonna cost, but at least it went down and didn't go up. Last year, they, they didn't have a raise because of the COVID, so they're, they're pretty healthy, so, with their budget. Thank you.
And I've got, just to add to the EDA joint meeting, we talked about the parking lot behind, behind K&amp;J, the, the big parking lot, and it was a good discussion in regards to the need for parking downtown. And that lot really needs a lot of work, so Morgan, I think that's part of the capital improvement plan. I know we talked about that, and, you know, we may want to look at that, doing that sooner than later. And then we had a, a meeting with the Arts Council, looking at adding members to the Arts Council, going through all the applications, councilmember Wong and myself, and the chair, Tom Sonic. We, we had eight applications, and all great candidates, and so we'll be looking at bringing forth the Arts Council here in the next couple of meetings. So, general business, councilmember Cole?
Last week, Mayor Furlong, councilmember Wong and myself had the opportunity to work the grill for the, for the North St. Paul firefighters and their families. It was a phenomenal opportunity for the, for the three of us to be there. The, the attendance was fantastic. They brought the bouncy house out for, for the kids. Everybody brought something, you know, a dish to pass, and it was just, again, just check the box. It was something that didn't happen last year because of COVID. It was just a, a great opportunity to, to get to see everybody out there again, where you're, you know, as opposed to just boo you when you're standing there with the, standing there with, with your bowl and a mask on, so it was a phenomenal opportunity. We also had a meeting with the bar owners, the director of the car show, their chief of police, city manager and mayor Furlong to discuss the open container that maybe, that was happening at the, at the last car show. I was very surprised by the openness and the, and the willingness of the, of the bar owners. They love the fact that they've got patio space out in front of their properties. They love the fact that they've got outdoor seating, and they are willing to work with the city in any way, shape or form to enable for this opportunity to continue, as well as self-policing. They talked about putting up barricades to designate an area. I was down on Friday night. The, the, the bars did have barriers up, kind of designated the drinking area. They had signage up, et cetera, so it was, it was just phenomenal to see the partnership that, that exists between the city, the car show and, and the, the bar owners. And the only other thing I'm gonna kick on is National Night Out, but Candy, are you gonna cover that?
Yeah, I just wrote it down.
All right, it's yours.
Councilmember Wong?
Yeah, other than, you know, the firemen, annual picnic, that was great, and had a lot of fun. Other than that, I don't have any other updates.
Councilmember Peterson?
Well, the car show was phenomenal, again, talking about, for a need for parking, we certainly do, but a lot of comments. I know people, when I'm out working at Oakland, they all have their old cars, and they come into North St. Paul. I said, I hope you're spending money while you're here, but I don't know if they do or not. And I want to talk about National Night Out. I want to remind the residents that that's coming up on August 3rd. And I, Carrie, is there gonna be a list on the city website, or?
Right now, we're taking applications through OpenGov. I think we have 11 residences that are ordered right now. And then the other addition that came up this week is police and fire are gonna also host an open house at City Hall for residents who maybe aren't getting together with their blocks.
Very good. Yeah, I always look forward to that. It's fun. I don't eat at all of them. I'll have a chip and maybe a pickle, and maybe I end up on Indian Way, because that's one of the better ones, because I live up on Indian Way. But, no, I just encourage everyone to come on out. It's good and, you know, meet your neighbors. And I think we're gonna require masks up on Indian Way. I haven't really talked to the person in charge.
Require what?
She wants to do.
What'd you say?
She might be requiring masks.
Okay.
And I have no problem with that. She's the coordinator, and I said, let's do that. So, yeah, that's all I have. Thanks.
Are they, just real quick, are they asking for councilmembers to show up?
Yes, some have checked that box, and some haven't.
So, I will not be there that night. That's just to let you know. I won't be. I'll be with my daughter, with the baby. General, general business, councilmember Thorson?
Yeah, a couple of items. First question is kind of general. What, is there a plan to get the council chambers back to, to normal?
Back to normal?
I mean, it looks like the audience section has kind of restored to half to normal, and it has been for several meetings, and.
I think we're pretty, yeah, I don't see why not. Okay.
All right, and then I asked a question about, I think it was at, was it the June? I can't remember now, but there was a meeting where we, we were handed, or I submitted to the clerk to put in the record, the, the litigation with the planning commission. And, and I think there was some confusion, because at that same meeting, RT had submitted some emails, and there was some back and forth between the city attorney and a clerk, and that, it never got in, neither of them got involved in, or included in the agenda, which maybe we can include that tonight, because I just asked a question about what the cost of the litigation was, and I got a follow-up here. The total cost of the city of North St. Paul for that frivolous lawsuit was $28,870.45, and I just point that out because I think it's important for the public to know and understand when these things happen. So I'll give that to you, and just wanted to follow up on that question, and that's all.
I, I can try and answer that question. So when, when we talk about submitting documents for the record, they, they are part of the record. They become a document that the city is required to store and maintain. Minutes are traditionally a summary of the proceedings. They'll reference a document, and you can come in and get the document. We have not traditionally taken whole documents and attached them to the minutes, and so when Jenny had inquired of me, I said, well, when RT submitted that, that is part of the record. The city does possess it. If anyone ever came in and said, I want to see the document that RT submitted, we have it. We could produce it. But I, we usually don't typically do, or I haven't seen it anywhere, where we do like attachments to the minutes, and that's in an effort to just reduce the size of the document itself. You can embed a link into the minutes. You can reference it and then produce it. So if there's a, if there's a desire to do it differently, we can. But I just, that was the nature of my advice when, when Jenny had inquired of, well, if someone submits it and it's in the record, do I actually have to attach it to the minutes? And I, I don't feel you have to. If we want to do it differently, we, we can, but that would take some direction from the council.
And I guess the only reason I bring it up is because, you know, with all this technology upgrades we have, it doesn't seem to me that it's that difficult to add a link and a reference to it, because it helps avoid a data request, which takes staff time. It's, it's being transparent. You know, the fact that it was mentioned in the general meeting, like now, that would be where you would look for it, I would imagine, in the meeting minutes, if, you know, you were following along and wanted to know. Certainly wasn't gonna read the 59 pages of the summary and, and that as well, so. I don't know if that's something we need to talk about for additional items, or if it's the, in the future, if, if it's something that I, like in this case, I should have gone into this new civic clerk and, and attached it? Is that, would that be appropriate?
I still think to keep our records process, that everything should go through the deputy clerk.
Okay.
I think that's still the right process to send those to Jenny, and then, again, you, whatever council directs us to do as far as adding attachments or links to those documents on our electronic services, we certainly can deal with that.
Jenny, how hard is it to, or have you done it where you embed a link if it references a document? Have you been doing that in the minutes up till now?
No, but I did reference that, that we received the documents, so I do have the documents on hand.
Right. I think it just becomes an issue of if you then go to the minutes and it references the document, at least on the electronic version, you know, and, and I, I don't know. I will follow your lead, but the, I've never seen it where you attach a hard copy as part of the minutes. There's either a reference, and then you ask for the document, or maybe we can embed a link. I don't know how hard that is. I don't want to start volunteering for Jenny on that, but that, that may be the solution, so that if you go online, which is a typical way of looking at the minutes, if there's a link, you can press it and you can get the document. That may be a solution rather than attaching it.
You want to discuss it at a workshop and?
Sure, if, if there's time, I know.
We could add it to a workshop. Be a good discussion. Not high priority right now, but I would assume, unless Scott, do you want to?
No, I mean, I, I just, you know, I think in the, that's why I submitted it, so it was easy for someone to find, rather than, you know, because the process of doing a data request is, unless you've done it, I, I don't think there's a lot of people interested in that, and, and this whole going online thing, I just envisioned it being easier to embed a link or what have you, and if it's not, then so be it. But it, I mean, that's how I've been following along in our meeting, these embedded links with the, everything, so.
Okay, sounds good. All I, are you done?
Yeah.
Okay. I would like to piggyback on the National Night Out. I mentioned that. I won't, I will not be here. Also, the downtown businesses, when we talk to them in regards to outdoor furniture, that was something that was brought up, and I think we should add that also to a workshop item, because I think the, the thought was that we would offer all this outdoor furniture for downtown, and I don't know if that's, I think as a council, we should talk about that, whether or not the business owners are gonna purchase it, or if we're, the city's gonna purchase all that, and when we would store it. I think that's a good discussion for another workshop, and I, we should probably do it. I think it'd be a good winter project for us, but I would add it to the, to a workshop at, at some point here. And I think that's all I, oh, the, thank you. The Business Association's having their picnic down at Casey Lake on June 10th. August 10th. Thank you, Carrie and Candy. August 10th, is there a time?
Yeah, I'll be knownish, I would think.
Okay, so August 10th for, for the business meeting down at Casey Lake. And I believe that's all I have at this time, so nothing else.
Mayor? Yep. If you wouldn't mind, I think it's worth maybe having a quick discussion due to the drought conditions going through the state right now, and the water conservation that has been talked about. I'd like to turn it over to Morgan to discuss that a little bit.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so this is really kind of a, a public service announcement for the benefit of the council. Any public that are watching, the meeting here tonight, city staff has posted information on the city's website related to asking residents to exercise some measures in terms of conserving water, and that based, is based off of information coming from the DNR in terms of, within the state of Minnesota right now, approximately 50% of the state is in extreme drought conditions. According to the DNR, about 5% of the state is actually in more serious drought conditions. Now, here in Ramsey County, it's only considered a moderate drought. One of the measure, measures that we have, or any city would have in terms of moderating or reacting to this kind of announcement by the DNR, is whether or not we're having difficulty keeping up with our, our peak water pumping demands in terms of our water distribution system. I'm pleased to report that we don't have any current issues. There's no shortage of water within the city of North St. Paul, and so there's certainly no need for any concern. However, in accordance with our water supply plan, which is something that we update every 10 years as a requirement with the DNR, when these types of announcements come out from the DNR in terms of drought conditions existing within the state, it's important to refer to that plan. And at this point, again, knowing that we don't have any concerns, we're simply providing information and advisory to the public, a request to maybe think, think twice before using water wastefully, and to consider some tips and tricks that, again, we've posted on the website. And this is fairly common, so knowing that we are in a moderate drought condition, staff will continue to keep an eye on things, keep an eye on our, our water pumping and our water distribution system. Again, no issues, no problems right now, but just recognizing the fact from a, a weather condition standpoint, which is certainly outside of our control, we want to be resilient and be able to react to that and provide information to the public. And if we do see any need for changes or moderating or changing that type of information that we're putting forth to the public, we'll, we'll make that available. You know, it could potentially come to pass that we might need to enact some restrictions because of this. Again, in accordance with our water supply plan, but there's no need to do that right now, and hopefully we come out of this seasonal and cyclical period without too much trouble, as typically when we move into the fall months, it gets a little bit wetter. But I just wanted to point that out to the council, again, to the, anyone in the public that's interested. There is information posted on the website, again, with some things to think about, maybe while you're using water again in the interest of conservation and not being wasteful with the use of it, so just wanted to put that out there.
Your communications person, you've taken note, and you'll put that on the website as our community announcement.
It's already there.
It's already there. Good.
It's the lead story in our CDE news for tomorrow. Well, it's the second story, because the first story is Dan.
She's that good.
She's that good. So somebody mentioned to me today about Gooseberry Falls up in, up on Lake Superior, and there is nothing being, there's no water in Gooseberry Falls right now. Just amazing. You know, typically, there's water, 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 and there's nothing. now. Just amazing. You know, typically, there's water, 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 and there's nothing being at Gooseberry. So, interesting. So at this time, a motion to adjourn. We do have an HRA meeting after the general meeting here, so need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by councilmember Thorson. Sent by councilmember Cole. Any discussion? Now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We'll take a quick, couple-minute break here, and then we'll start the HRA.